This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Well, welcome to the City Council Finance Committee meeting. It's April 23rd, 5:33 PM. We do not have minutes to approve, but I'm sure they will be excellent and just the best minutes I've ever seen. We have no mayor, and I think you're both here for... Is there anyone from the public who's wanted to speak about anything other than what's on our agenda tonight? I do not think so. Okay, well, let's jump into it. I'll start with the appropriation for $69,382. This is coming from a mixture of open space and undesignated funds. And it's to fund Lathrup years two and three of invasive removal. Councilor Denham, you might remember, we funded year one last year, but there was some problems that had to do with all the turnover in the Planning Department. And they didn't get the funds in time to do the work. So the initial plan was to roll this out over three years, but seeing as those funds were there, are still there and unused, there's an ask that we just give the other two years now, and so that the whole thing can kind of be done in one. So that basically they can front-load a lot of the work that needs to be done.
So is, was the first year roughly $34,000, $35,000-ish? It was $33,000, and change, yeah.
Right, and I'm sure that our friends from Lathrup can explain it better, but the basic idea is that Lathrup has a large amount of land which is in conservation restriction, and they want to do a comprehensive project to remove invasives from that land. So that's the idea.
I'll wait till we're jumping in.
Yeah, was there anything you'd want to add, and then I'll turn things over to...
Um, no, I mean, I echo everything Tom said. I guess I, and I'm sure Lathrup will speak to this too, but there was an inflation adjustment to the cost. So the original project cost, when we reviewed it under year one, was slightly less than what we're reviewing it under now. And they have a contractor ready to go, and that contractor's actually already done the work on the Northampton part of the property. So the property stands, the Northampton CPA and council has already approved this, and it's already been happening on the Northampton portion.
I just want to do the East Hampton portion.
Exactly, yeah.
Do, will there be... Maybe this is premature to ask this question, but I would be very interested in how this all goes at the end of this. Will there be some sort of report back to CPA or anything about, you know, we spent a year doing this and we have got it under control or not under control? Like, will there be something like that?
Yeah, so the CPA, the project funding agreement asks for, for project updates every six months with like a larger project update at the end of the project.
Okay.
And Lathrup also, and I'll let them speak to this, but there's an education, a public education component of this as well.
Okay.
That you guys want to describe a little more?
Okay, shall I just sit right here?
All right, come up and join us if you'd like. We've got plenty of seats.
All right, on your seat. All right, here we are. Patrick Arguin, CEO at Lathrup. And maybe you could introduce yourselves to him.
Sure, I'm Tom Peak. I'm a city councillor. I'm also the one, I'm the city councillor on the CPA committee, and I'm the Finance Committee Chair.
Connie Denham, I'm just, I'm just a city councillor. And a fine one at that. Peg Coniff, I am also a city councillor as of March.
And I'm Ava Gerstall, the CPA coordinator at Conservation Agency. Patrick, how do you spot your lesson?
A-R-G-U-I-N.
Thank you.
Okay, so basically, this three-year project has three parts. One part is to remove invasive plants from a total of 103 conservation-restricted acres that Lathrup owns. It's very valuable land. It's in the areas from both East Hampton and Northampton that are prioritized for land conservation. Particularly for us, it's Park Hill, next to the Park Hill conserved land. And it abuts the East Hampton portion, which is 78 acres, abuts the Northampton CR land, which is also part of our East Campus, Dollar Street, which is 11.2 acres. So this land is in part valuable because it connects to so much other conserved land, serves as wildlife corridors, and helps to protect a large enough area so that it makes a significant refuge for wildlife in the valley. And our goal then is to protect that land as well as an additional CR that Lathrup owns on its north campus, on Bridge Road, which is 15 acres. And so for this three-year project, we came to the city of Northampton and the city of East Hampton, and we joined with the Kestrel Land Trust. So the four of us came together to fund this project. The city of Northampton CPA funds have already been completed, completely committed in full, and we have spent year one of those funds, so that is ongoing. And the East Hampton portion, as you explained, Tom, was held up. We got the funds, but we couldn't do the work because the funds were not made available to us in time. It was a staffing shortage, nobody's fault. Everybody was doing their best here, but we simply couldn't get the work done before the snow fell. So we have our same contractor. We're giving him an inflationary increase because he was ready to go last year. But same contract, same price, except for the inflationary increase. He is ready to go. He is a very old hand at this business. Lincoln Fish is his name, and he's very well-known in these circles in the valley. He's done work for us this past year on the non-CR acres for which no city funds are being used. So I said the, the project has three parts. One is the 103 acres of conserved land for which we are using the Northampton and East Hampton CPA money. And then there is an auxiliary portion of about seven acres, which Lathrup is paying for, where we will remove invasives from our landscaped areas and adjacent areas because, it's all one ecosystem, and the critters don't know the difference, and neither do the invasives, so we want to keep...
There's no East Hampton Pride or Northampton.
That's right, that's right. Right, so that's one piece. Another piece, actually, that's two pieces, the CR land and the, the non-CR land, which is mostly landscaped area. And there we are removing, we are also removing invasive shrubs from the landscaping and replacing them with native shrubs. And at the moment, we are embarking on that project on both campuses. That was Lathrup's pay, paid to pay for, and Lathrup's contribution. We've got now a list of 34 invasive shrubs in our landscaping on both campuses that have been volunteered by the residents of these homes to say, "Come and take out my burning bush, and I'll replace it with a native shrub." We have a list of native shrubs. Patrick has been very involved in that, has, as has our facilities director. So that piece of the grant is well on its way. And this is heavily supported by volunteers. In fact, I'm going to tell them about your son.
Yeah, my son's there right now, working in the garden. All I have to do is school vacation, why not?
We don't only get Patrick, we get the boy. And he's working with three or four volunteers, resident volunteers, with our old backs around there. And the other part is the public information part. So each year, we sponsor one public presentation. We gave one last year, and we'll do another one this year. Last year, a guy came from, who's a board member of the Kestrel Land Trust, and he talked, but, but he's an environmentalist with a PhD and a faculty position at the Ohio State University, and he talked about Lathrup's efforts for land conservation and native habitat in the light of what else is going on in the valley. It was fascinating. We had both Lathrup presidents and members as a public there. So this project is well on its way. We're doing what we said we'd doing, the progress is being made, and now we're asking for the rest of the money so that we can finish up years two and three. And the reason we want all three years at the same time is that invasive removal tends to be resource-heavy on the front end because you go in there and you take out these big, you know, invasives that are covering the ground, and then the next year, you go along and you kind of mop up, and the third year, you mop up. That's how it goes. These invasives, no matter how good a job you do, they come back because they have extensive underground root systems. But if you keep at it, you can get on top of them. So what's the goal? The goal here then is that by the end of the third year of the project, and the East Hampton project is going to be, is this is the first year really of work for the East Hampton project. North Hampton project is in its second year, and it doesn't matter that there's that. So what is the goal? The goal is that these 110 acres, 103 conservation-restricted acres, and the seven acres of contiguous and landscaped land will be a continuous ecological system that provides a refuge for all of the critters that depend on native plants. And the key statistic is this one. A landscape or a woods dominated by invasives may lose up to 75% of its wildlife compared to one that is dominated by native plants. Why? Because the native, the native critters, the birds and the pollinators have evolved to be able to use our native plants. But invasive plants come from Asia or Europe or some other place. They've left all their enemies and competitors behind. They run amok, and they don't offer the kind of nutrition, the kind of flower structure, or leaf structure, or the kind of nesting places that our native wildlife need. So it's not just that we're landscaping the outdoors or that we're doing something beautiful, although it is beautiful to see. Oh, a clean New England woods or field. But it, but it is very critical to contribute to the way which, in which we in the valley take care of the creatures who call this our home. And that is very much our value system at Lathrup and our philosophy, which is that we, human beings, share this land with the creatures who also call this their home. So that's the, the larger goal. And we will report to you regularly, and we will come back at the end and say, "This is what we did."
Do you have before and after pictures?
We do, yeah.
A, have you considered running for president? B, I, I, you had started to talk about 103 acres, then you mentioned 78 acres, 11 acres, and then seven acres. So is the 78 East Hampton acres part of the 103?
Yes.
Okay, and then the 11.2 acres are what now? Also part of the 103?
The 11.2 acres are also part of the 103, as are the 15, 14-something acres on the North Hampton campus. So that makes up the 103.
That's nice.
And then there's seven extra acres that aren't in CR.
And that's the landscape around the building that you can see right when you come up?
And the CRs are laid out in some cases, in two, in both cases, on the campuses that there's a, an alley that separates two parts of the CRs. We're going to do that.
Did East Hampton approve a conservation restriction several years ago when I was on the council?
That's right.
I recall that. There's something about a pond, I mean, not pond, a stream was involved?
So Bassett Brook is the, is the back, like, is the stream that's on this property. And that's a perennial stream and a really beautiful ecosystem.
Oh, great, okay. So that was part of the protection that we...
That's right.
Yes.
But Kestrel holds the CR.
As they should.
Several years ago.
Yeah.
And that was a requirement for applying for CPA funding too, is a conservation restriction on that land.
Okay, sweet.
Good to see you again.
Yes.
Uh, just a couple of, um, quick questions, I guess, want to comment. So the Bees Committee, which is biodiversity stuff. Yeah, I'm so terrible with acronyms, but anyway, I can send it to you. But one of their projects is removing invasive species and things like that too, right? invasive plants. But that might be a really great...
Yes, it might.
Partnership.
Yes, it might.
Because they're, part of what they do is volunteer-related, and so here's a great opportunity for those, that connection. And then that's something that, you know, that since the, we're using community funds, right? It's an opportunity for the community to also kind of come and be a part of that.
That's good. I'll, I'll get that link and make the connection.
Yep.
The Bees Committee, B-E-E-S.
Yeah, 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 Bees. And then the, the other question that I have, and, and we talked about this before, but just to remind the community, right? So, and you talked about an educational component to this that the public is invited to. Are there other ways that East Hampton residents can enjoy kind of what's a part of this? And can you say a little bit more about that in terms of...
The trails on our land are maintained almost entirely by residents. It's not a sophisticated trail system. It's not intended for heavy public use. Our own residents are out there, you know, clearing it away and pulling the poison ivy, though we never guarantee that there isn't poison ivy on the trail. So it's a residential, self-maintained, somewhat primitive trail system. However, at the trailhead, you have to wind through our campus to get to the trailhead. So again, it's not really an open public, you know. But at the trailhead, it says, "Members of the public are welcome, dawn to dusk, no vehicles beyond this point."
Oh, that's great.
People do walk the trails. And snowshoe the trails.
The CPA committee did unanimously approve this, so... Um, I don't know, is there any other questions from the membership?
I remember this from the course. I, I think this is really important, and I think the statistics that you gave, right, are, speak to why this is important. And like I said, this is in line with, you know, the support that this, the council has given to the Bees Committee to, to address some of these issues and things like that. So, you know, I hope that there will be that partnership and that connection that can be made and to be able to, to continue to support one another in that. It'd be good.
I hope, I'm, I am interested, I'm really, I think for most of the things that come out of CPA, the reporting is something that's mostly compliance. Sort of like, did you spend the money the way that we wanted you to spend the money? But I actually think that here there's a real opportunity for there potentially to be some education involved in this. I'd like, I'm interested to see what lessons you learn that another organization or even just a private homeowner like might be able to take something away from if they wanted to do their part to help, you know, with this effort. So I'm interested to see how that all goes.
Well, that's an, that's an obvious topic for our public presentation, right? To get the word out to other landowners and other communities, whether, whether retirement communities or other kinds of communities, about how they might be able to do some of these same kinds of things on their own land because we have been extraordinarily successful with what we've done over the years, just working at it with our own volunteers and our own staff and a lot of support from our management, and, and founded on our Quaker-related values. We care about stewardship of the land, stems from that.
Super.
Barb, what's your, it's Barbara, right?
Yes.
What is your role at Lathrup?
I'm a resident there.
It's the president. Are you kidding, or?
We have a land conservation committee, which has more than 30 resident members. We work closely with management, and I am one of the leaders of that committee. It's a very collaborative effort with a steering committee and all that. And I am the, and I am the project director for this project.
I would expect nothing more.
Barbara, can I ask, actually, and this may, I may have forgotten this from your materials. Sometimes invasive species, invasive plant contractors will set a success rate goal. Did Baystate set a success rate goal?
90%.
Okay, yeah, that's classic, after three years.
That's about the, yeah. That's kind of standard for the, for the industry. And, you know, the stuff shifts under our feet as we go forward. But, but Baystate is a really good outfit, and they were first recommended to us by Lori Sanders, whom you may know as a primary environmentalist and conservationist and historian in the area. She is the co-director of Historic Northampton. She's amazing. And way back, when we first started to think about this work, Lori recommended Link Fish and his outfit to us, and I'm so glad that he's, he's still around, bless his heart, because he knows, he really knows his stuff. So they're going to do a good job for us. Plus, we're out there with them, you know.
Any other questions? I would entertain a motion to recommend this appropriation of $69,382 to the full council.
So moved enthusiastically.
Second, just as enthusiastically.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Our...
Barbara, four minutes, what's your last? May 7th.
Yes.
Lovely meeting you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody.
So our meeting for the, the final public hearing will be May 7th, upstairs, 6:15.
Okay, okay, yes, absolutely. That's the full City Council.
Lovely to meet you.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you. Take care.
Thank you.
Okay. One point to cite, I know, Councilor Denham, you were often asking about account balances. We had, we spent down, the way that CPA usually tries to practice is to spend down its designated funds first and then move into undesigned. So we spent down the remaining 1,948 that was in reserve for open space, and that's why it's split like that, like we spent down what we could.
Yep. Are you on a fiscal year, so you'll re-up on July 1st?
Yeah.
In a sense.
Would it be helpful to project the available balances?
Yeah.
Take a look at those now?
Yeah.
Okay, so there's a lot going on here. But... Can you guys see that?
I don't know.
Okay, great. So the line in red up here was the beginning balances. This is what the CPA committee voted in February of 2024 to be budgeted into the various accounts based on the projected revenue from both the local surcharge and the state match. So they typically put 110 into each category, or that's, that's what they chose to do at February 20, in February 2024. And then there were some funds in those accounts that carried over. So at the beginning of the fiscal year of 2025, these numbers, this red. And red does not mean in the negative, just to clarify. And so for this fiscal year thus far, lines 10 through 13 are the appropriations that have already fully made it through City Council, including Lathrup year one. So that was voted on in first quarter of fiscal '25, but reviewed in fiscal '24. And that just, you know, for the Finance Committee's understanding, that decision to approve at least that Lathrup invasive removal was made at a time when, as what husband said, the Planning Department was really understaffed, and the CPA committee didn't yet know how much funding they were going to have for the following fiscal year. So they were only comfortable issuing the first year.
Yeah, we figured if it's a three-year project, yeah, send it out in installments.
So that was how that happened at the time. And then the two lines in blue are the appropriations in front of you today, the third quarter appropriations. So the Lathrup years one and two, and then we'll soon review Valley CDC. Then the rest of the sheet I sent is a, is really for the CPA committee because they have not yet, they have not yet voted on anything below this point, below the orange bar.
All right. Do we want to move to the CDC project? Okay. Hello?
Hello. So I have a tough act to follow because Lathrup had a phenomenal presentation, and they were in person, which I'm clearly not, so apologize to that. But hi, everybody, I'm Alexis Freidnicker. I'm the executive director from Valley Community Development. And I don't know, Ava, do you want me to just like launch in and share what the project is? Like, what's, what's useful?
Um, I can, I can give maybe the first bit, and then, and then you'll, you'll be ready to answer questions. Does that sound good?
Yeah, totally.
So just some context of Valley CDC. This is a mortgage subsidy and financial literacy program. It bundles them together. So this particular program is for three $50,000 down payment assistance grants. And Alexis can get into the nitty-gritty on that if commission, if committee members or council members are curious. But it's a process, it's like a, a long-term loan that becomes a grant if you keep the house long enough.
Okay.
So Alexis, again, can get into the details if you're curious. So that's $50,003 of those $50,000 grants. And then the rest of it is for both administration for Valley CDC and this financial literacy program. Which, again, Alexis can get into the details of what that looks like. And this is coming on, after, so the CPA committee and the full council appropriated a project back in fiscal '22 for something very similar. At the time, the down payment assistance grants were $25,000, and there were three of them. Two of them have been used, the last one they have not found a use for. And there's some administrative funds remaining. And so those, the combination of those two chunks of funds from the fiscal '22 grant equals $59,000, $59,076, which as part of this project, here we are in fiscal '25, the $59,076 will be returned to the CPA committee. So essentially folded into this grant, but from an administration perspective, those funds will be returned but not able to be spent until the next fiscal year. So the full appropriation is being asked for at this time, the full 201,875, with the knowledge, it's in the project funding agreement, that those, that the $59,076 will be returned.
Ava, can I just clarify, because it's, sorry, I'm a little glitchy. So they're, they're returned maybe on your side, but not on our side because they're reimbursable funds, so we don't actually have them. Just to be clear about that, we're not cutting a check to the city. And the other, like, to preempt, I mean, I'm happy to cut a check to the city, but that's not, that's not what's going on here. To preempt a question, which I know we've been asked before, like, why are we asking for more money when we couldn't spend the money that we already had? Reasonable question. So what we found is that, as everybody knows, the cost to buy a home has only gone up, and then interest rates have continued to increase. So we have a existing $50,000 subsidy funded through CPA in Northampton. And that we were able to expend, and we just reapplied for and got refunded for. So what we're finding is that the $25,000 subsidy that we had from the 2022 fiscal year wasn't actually sufficient... wasn't actually sufficient to enable homeowners to be able to buy. So we were able to get two people in, but that third person, just like, the timing wasn't great. And what, like, the market saturation just was too much for people with higher income levels than what, like, the folks that we're working with. So hence our, like, we can't spend the twenty-five and now we're asking for fifty thousand dollars because we know that that actually can make an impact on people's ability to buy.
And this, I don't know where this is going to go, but the question. But so, and maybe it's to you, Alexis, I don't know. But so when we talk about financial literacy education and housing counseling service, those are for people. Do they apply for, to go to these, are they classes? Are they sessions? Or is it all part of the same stream of, at the end of doing these two things, we're going to give you how fifty thousand dollars with the mortgage?
Super great question. So Valley runs as part of being a certified housing counseling center, first-time homebuyer classes. We, those are available to anybody in the public. It doesn't matter what your income is, but particularly people take them because you can qualify for special mortgage products with reduced interest rates. If you go through a first-time homebuyer class, you also have to be a first-time homebuyer. So this can't be your second or third home. The folks that we would be going through this program, often will go through that workshop. It's online, it's nine hours, there's like a pretty set course curricula. And then they come to us and do one-on-one counseling with our certified HUD housing counselor. So almost every person that's come through and ended up with a mortgage subsidy, either through East Hampton CPA or Northampton CPA, has done that one-on-one counseling with us, often because there are folks who need that extra help. So Valley's known for, like, being a great organization that provides a lot of handholding for folks. In some cases, we've worked with homebuyers to reduce their debt and, like, you know, up their financial education for six years before they're ready to buy. So like, as, as I'm sure you can understand, like, with some people, it just takes a lot longer. And, you know, honestly, sometimes people come through the homeownership program and they realize, like, right now homeownership is not the right thing for me. So we also do that, you know, we don't think that everybody should be a buyer because sometimes that just isn't the right answer for people depending on their financial situation.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Can you just help me understand? I did the first-time homebuyer program, it was great. We were able to get a home. I didn't do the grant, but it was super helpful. But I do have a question just for the public. Can you explain a little bit more how the loan turns into a grant? Just so it's just a little bit more clear.
Totally, and Ava, I might need you to pinch-hit on this, too, because I'm like not a hundred percent on this. What I do know is that because this is affordable housing and because we're using CPA funds for this mortgage subsidy, that the intent is for people to stay in their homes. So we're trying to ensure affordability. We don't want someone to use this grant and then turn around five years later and sell their home and, you know, get market price for it, make a bunch of money, but have used this program, this subsidy program. So there's an incentive that the loan is a zero-interest mortgage, so it's recorded as a lien against the deed. And it's forgiven between years six and fifteen, six and fifteen at a tenth of the value, so approximately five thousand dollars a year. Thank you so much, Ava. And then after fifteen years, it essentially goes away. So that we're trying to incentivize people staying in their homes that get this subsidy. Ava, please, like, fill in anything that I missed.
No, I think you really covered it, Alexis. This is, what I have projected is what was included in Valley CDC's fiscal twenty-two five application. But they utilize the numbers from the fiscal twenty-two. So you notice that the amount remaining is twenty-five thousand here. So you can just sort of scale it up, double it. But that's.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, yeah, but that's what's, that's what's going on here. So it doesn't start, like Alexis said, it doesn't start, the loan forgiveness doesn't start until year seven, but then it reaches completion after year fifteen.
And then after that, it essentially turns into a grant. So it's not counted in your debt-to-income after year fifteen if you stayed in the house. That's the big difference. But if you were to sell on year two, you'd have to repay the whole amount.
Any other questions? Okay, yeah, and once again, we approved this. Saying unanimously is always a little bit difficult because there's usually not, CPA's a huge committee and there's usually not perfect attendance, but everyone who's there voted for it. And I'm sure the others would have if they, if they'd been there. So if there's no other questions, I would entertain a motion to recommend this appropriation of two hundred thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars to the full council.
Isn't it two hundred and one eight seventy-five?
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry, I just read the one. Yeah, two hundred and one thousand eight hundred and seventy-five.
So moved. I'll second.
Enthusiastically, all in favor? Super. Motion passes. So same speech before, I'm sorry, what'd you say?
I just said, thank you so much.
Oh, sure thing. Same speech before, on Wednesday, the May seventh at six fifteen, we will be having the full public hearing on this. So if somebody, you or someone else from your organization can be there just in case any of the other counselors have any questions, which there may be, that would be super.
Of course, thank you so much, have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you, Alexis.
Okay. Edel's not here, so we certainly don't have a report from the auditor. So unless there's anything I'm liking on it, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will make that motion to adjourn. I will second her motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned, thanks, everybody.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.